Everybody would please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair most for approval of the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Announcements, there will be a facilities committee meeting this Wednesday, April 12th, right here in this room. Teaching and learning special board meeting, April 14th at 7:30 in the ESC conference room A. And our regular board meeting will be May 1st at 6:00 PM here in this room for May. And West Tonka staff and retiree celebration is May 3rd at 3:30 PM in Mount West Tonka High School. Signing night tonight with the share of the success. And Kristi, you're going to start it off for us tonight. Thank you.
Do I need to move this or do it? Are we good?
Yeah. Maybe just tip it down to your humble.
What are you saying? It's short. Hi, everyone, I'm Kristi Zacco, I'm a principal at Grandview Middle School, and I'm really excited tonight to be able to recognize our Future Cities participants or our award winners of the Future Cities competition. I know, I think I saw three of you come in, so why don't you come up so we can recognize you while we're doing this? Sophie, I see you're really excited. Aiden, I saw you. Annabelle, I know you're here. I don't think, I think we're missing one. Trig, did you make it, Trig? Okay. Camera's right there, so make sure you smile. It's been a few years since we've talked about the Future Cities competition, so I thought before we talk about what they did and why they're here, to show a really short clip on what the Future Cities competition is. So I'm going to go ahead and play this so the board member has a little bit of an idea, plus the visuals of it, I think are good. All right, how do I get rid of this? Would you want to look at the rest of your, the rest of your meeting? Let's see. All right. I think it was important to have those visuals up there because it's kind of a tough competition to conceptualize if you've not been there before. But at Grandview, we have a Future Cities class, and so students apply to be a part of this class instead of their regular STEM class. So we had 19 students apply, participate in the class, and of those 19, 10 participated at the regional competition. I think there were like 50 other teams that were there this year. And they, not everyone gets an award, but the group that we have in front of us actually got a special award. So to give a little bit of context of how this works, so they have overall winners, but the competition itself is put on by a bunch of different engineering firms, technology firms, and so different businesses sponsor different awards. The award that this group won was best railway infrastructure. So that's, you know, for seventh graders to be talking about infrastructure is kind of, you know, outside of the scope of what most seventh graders are talking about. But so it was a pretty big deal. Not everyone leaves with a trophy, and they left with, what did you get for prizes? Hacks or something? Do you remember the little gift bags? They were super, super memorable. Usually it's usually it's a goody bag of some sorts, but we have some certificates for you. But just to kind of walk you through how the class itself works, so they need in there during the day, and there's several components of the competition. The part that you saw up here was the Future City model, and so that is something that they're graded on at the competition. They also have to do a presentation about that model, why it is a city of the future, the different things that make up their city. So they're talking about things like sustainability, they have to think about zoning, they have to integrate a lot of different types of engineering in the process of planning their city. So it is, there's a ton of problem solving involved, there's a ton of collaborative work, collaboration within their teams. You have to be super creative, and they're also applying engineering, the engineering process is a part of that, math, science, it's fully integrated in a really hands-on class. They also have to write a long essay, I can't remember how long Mr. Eggu told me, Mr. Eggu is the teacher, by the way, but they have to present all the things, what that makes their city a city of the future. So the focus this year, and every year the engineering, the group that puts it on has one specific focus, and this year's specific focus was climate change in the city. So everything that they did within their model, within their plan, they had to think about how they are going to address climate change as a part of that process. So some really innovative ideas came out of our group and all of the students that participate in this across the state. So we're really proud that they represented Grandview and West Tonka schools, and the fact that they came away with a special award is something that we are very proud of, and which is why we invited them to come tonight. So they actually have three different certificates, so they're leaving with their best rail infrastructure, I have that certificate, as well as their participation and acknowledgement from the school board. So you want to join me in congratulating them? I'll make sure I introduce them all. So we have Annabelle Straggy. Annabelle, you want to come up and get your certificates? Annabelle. Sophia Stanberry. There's Sophia. And last but not least, Aiden Hustman. Aiden. And one more student, Trig Carlson, was unable to be here tonight, but he was another participant. So again, I don't know if you want, do you want them to do the walk around the table?
Oh, absolutely.
So they would like to shake your hands and congratulate you. Thank you.
This is Zacco, we could probably let the Southwest Rail know that we got some great students here.
There's solar power too, by the way. Thank you.
All right, good evening, I'm Jolene Herfle, the principal of the high school, and I'm proud to be here this evening to recognize a number of our students, literally lined up down the hallway. So thank you for coming this evening, I just want to thank all of the parents and the school board members to take time out of this absolutely beautiful evening to come and recognize and celebrate students for the wonderful things that they do. Before I begin, I also want to just thank you for the support that you give our programs. Parents, I'm a parent of two teenagers myself, I understand you have been driving from here to there to everywhere for years and years and years. You've supported the different camps and all the different things that have happened. And the wonderful thing at the high school is we have the opportunity to have those culminating moments where all of a sudden, before they go off to whatever they're going to do after graduation, they do some really amazing stuff that represents our school and themselves at the highest level. So I just want to thank all the parents for all the support you've put in for literally years and years and years, and also thank the school board for all the support that you offer in making sure that we can provide these opportunities for students, so we're very grateful for that. So to begin with, I would like to start by recognizing our this year's Excel Award recipient, who is Natalie Minor. Natalie is the daughter of Stephanie and Jim. And the Excel Award is an award that's given by the State High School League to very high level juniors. And really what they are recognizing at the State High School League is they're trying to recognize students that kind of have all of the different pieces in place. Academically, they're incredibly strong. Community service wise, they recognize the importance of already getting involved in their community at a young age, outside of the school environment. And then also the school environment involved in a number of different activities, and I'll have Natalie come up here in just a little bit and share all the different things that she does within our school as she represents us, but there's also a number of things that she does outside of her school. But as a junior, she is being recognized as this year's Excel Award recipient through the Minnesota State High School League, as Mount West Tonka's Excel recipient. So congratulations, Natalie. And for where she shakes the hands, I am going to ask her, just because she's a junior, and we're very much looking forward to all the leadership things that she's going to do next year, no pressure, but we'll be coming to you a few times. But I would like her to just share a little bit about what she does outside of the classroom because she does wonderful things inside the classroom, but also a number of things that just make our school community a much stronger community. So if you want to come on up, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, so for sports, I'm involved in soccer, hockey, and track, and I'm a captain for soccer and track, and an assistant captain for hockey. I'm a student senate communications officer, DECA officer, NHS, junior officer, and yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we are going to recognize two seniors for our AAA award. The AAA award is an award that is established through the State High School League, and it specifically recognizes academics, arts, and activities. So with this particular award, it is recognizing seniors who have been involved in all three areas at very high levels. And I'm very proud to share the two students that we have with us, Laura Sonnerborg, and I will have her explain what she's doing next year, and then we also have Danny Kaznowski. These two seniors are involved in an incredible amount of activities within our school, but something that's very unique for them, because we have absolutely fantastic students across the board, so it becomes very difficult to stand out when you are competing against some other very successful and involved students. And something that's very unique about these two particular students is they are heavily involved and do incredibly well in their classroom, and then they do an incredibly strong job as being leaders within our school outside of the classroom, but they're involved in the arts as well as activities, right, you know, specifically known as sports, most people would associate that with that. But the wonderful thing about these two is when we talk about that concept of having a well-rounded student, these are two in the class of 2023 that really represent this year's graduating classes, strong, well-rounded students in all three of those different areas. So we are just incredibly proud, well, we will miss them greatly next year, we are confident they will represent us well as they move on to whatever it is that they're planning to do. So what I'm going to do is ask them both to just speak a little bit, to maybe share what you've been involved in at the high school through your high school years, and then also what it is that you plan to do next year. All right? Go ahead.
All right, so here at the high school, I'm involved in DECA, NHS, Link Crew Rotary, I do student senate, and at Fine Arts, I'm in the Linda Ensemble, I'm also involved in Boy Scouts. Sports wise, I've done basketball, soccer, and I'm doing golf as of now. And next year, I'm looking forward to going to the University of Wisconsin-Madison and studying civil engineering.
Hi, here at the high school, the sports I play are cross-country and track, and then for activities, I'm involved in student senate, DECA, NHS, and Link Crew, and Environmental Club, and I also used to be a part of the speech team. For arts, I played piano, I took lessons for about 10 years, and then I'm also outside of the high school, I'm involved in the Head of an Division Board of the Minnesota Association of Student Councils, and an organization I co-founded called Greater Twin Cities High School Environmental Coalition. And next year, I haven't decided which college I'm going to yet, but I'm planning to study environmental studies on a pre-law track, hoping to become an environmental lawyer at a private college in Minnesota.
We have some tremendous students who are also nominated for the Excel and the AAA awards that were not selected locally, but just are really, really tight. And so our committee has a tough time making those decisions for, to select just a couple of individuals. Jolene stole my thunder and my wind thanking the school board and our parents, but I'm just going to say thank you for the continued support. We've had an incredible year to this point from an activities perspective. We've won five conference championships that include boys soccer for the first time in school history, jazz and kick, speech for the third, third time in the last four years, and gymnastics. And that leads me to, nope, not swim.
Oh, not conference.
Yeah, not conference. We took second in swim. And that leads me to Reagan Kelly. Reagan, so our gymnastics program, we co-op with Watertown. It's the only co-op that we offer that we do not own, meaning that we do not run the program. And so our kids, our gymnastics athletes, travel to Watertown to train on a daily basis. And 2021, 2022 state champions, and not only that, but to have the individual state champion in 2022 and 2023, right here in front of us is Reagan Kelly. Reagan's just had a tremendous career as a gymnast, and she's got some other stuff in there. This year, she was all-around champion in '22 and '23, but then also was the pole vault. No, not pole, that's track.
Just ball.
Just ball. You just added a new sport to gymnastics. Gymnastics. Reagan, champion involved this year, and last year you were an individual champion in?
It was all-around.
All-around. So I'm going to have Reagan just share, maybe just a couple of things about the co-op and her experience in gymnastics, but she's had just a tremendous career, and what you're doing next year.
So basically, when I first moved to Watertown, I was really scared because I had been in clubs my whole life, and I knew those people my entire life, but after I got there, they were super welcoming, and it was really fun, like new experience that I had never really thought about. And after that, I just started competing, and everything went really well, and I got to meet a lot of my new friends, and yeah. And I'm going to Winona State University next year for D3 gymnastics, and I'm planning on majoring in graphic design.
And I'm just going to tell you from, from the little I've been able to watch Reagan compete, it's absolutely unbelievable. What she, what she does is truly, truly impressive. So our swim and dive team this year, best finish in school history, we took third place at the state tournament, we took second place in the conference, we lost to Delano. I think it came down, did it come down in the last race of the meet? No.
I don't know, no, they're...
They were a little, they were a little ahead of us. Delano took second in state visitation. If you know anything about girls swimming, visitation won the state tournament again, so everybody's really fighting for second place at the state tournament. And so Delano second, Mount West Tonka, Holy Family, we also co-op there, we were able to take third place. Here, we're going to recognize our Class A 200 medley relay state champions that include from Mount West Tonka, Kate Johnson, who's not here, but Mom and Dad are here, thanks for coming. Camille Ness, who's not here, both Kate and Camille, I guess, are teaching swimming lessons right now. And we have Jalen Storm in front of us. Jalen, really truly an unbelievable high school career as a swimmer. In my time here, for sure, the most decorated swimmer that we've had at Mount West Tonka High School. Mom sent me a picture with a lot of hardware, I asked her if she had any hardware with her today, but she said no, she didn't bring any, but truly, truly impressive. So I want to have Jalen just share, because it is, it's too much for me to remember, I'm going to have her share the accomplishments that she's had the last two years, three years, you want to go two years?
Yeah.
Okay. Congratulations.
I think we've broken like two records every year, but like we re-break them each year. So that's, and then we made it to state every year since seventh grade, and yeah. And my plans for the future, I think I'm going to go to Duluth, but I'm not decided. I don't have a decided major either.
What's your favorite swimming event? 500?
No. Sprint 53, that's the shortest race there is.
What was your time?
2384, I think?
25.
85.
Congratulations. As Jalen said, I've been to state over the years since seventh grade. Our swim program has just tremendously improved over time, and, and she's a big, she's a really big part of that. Mom, I'm still working on the placards, I'll get them for you next, I think next week. That brings us to Jack Nelson. Jack Nelson, he is the second in school history, the second three-time state champion. For those of you who know Gary Erdman, Jack and Gary are in really rare air. Jack is a state champion in 106, 120, and this year, 126. Three-time state champion, he's a junior, so he's got a, he's got a chance to do it one more time. If you haven't had a chance to watch Jack wrestle, I'd say that he's really methodical, and he's, and he's actually thoughtful on the mat. He's thinking about what he's going to do, he's also thinking about what his opponent is potentially trying to do, and he's really, really fun to watch. State tournament, state championship, he pinned his opponent, I believe in the second period, so excited I didn't look at that, but second period, and just tremendous career. So I'm going to have Jack come up, tell you what weight he thinks he might be at next year, and, and what he's planning to do in the future, because he already has, he already has that worked out. Congratulations, Jack.
So next year, my weight class will probably be either 132 or 138 maybe, unless I get bigger here, that's what I'm hoping I do. And my plan for the future is I've committed to go to University of Minnesota, so for my school.
Do you know what you're going to major?
No, not yet. Not yet.
Awesome, congratulations. Careful shaking Jack's hand. I should have given that heads nod earlier. Be careful shaking Jack's hand. As I said, we've had a tremendous fall and tremendous winter, and this year, for the first time in school history, our dance team, they're rolling in here, our dance team placed, placed in the state tournament for the first time in school history, meaning placed in the top three.
Jack can't get away from the dancers.
So, so we placed third in jazz, and Coach Carlson and Coach Spangers, and the rest of the squad, our parents, super excited, we've never placed above fourth in school history, and so very, very excited. What we, what we hadn't known yet, we knew we had a very good kick team, they had been on mark all year.
All year?
Yeah, been on mark all year, had a really, really just strong, I'd say, regular season, scores were really high. So, so our jazz team placed third, and our kick team, state champions. As I mentioned, our previous state champions were in gymnastics, a program that we co-op that we don't own, but we're still claiming that state championship. This was our first Mount West Tonka state champion since 1997, so that's a while. And so this, this group of young ladies and coaching staff has just put in a tremendous amount of time. I met with Molly, we had our end of the season meeting this year, and I just said, Molly, I don't really know what I can tell you to do better, just, just not sure. It seems like things are really in a good spot, and, and so I'm going to just...
I can see it's going all right.
So I'm going to stay out of the way, I'm just going to stay out of the way. So I'm going to introduce Coach Carlson and Coach Spangers, and let them touch base on some, some highlights of the season and talk about the girls. Congratulations.
All right, thank you, Jeff, for all of your support, and you are very good at staying out of the way, and I mean that in the kindest way possible. He's very supportive and lets us do our thing. I want to thank the school board for having our team here tonight and for all of your support. As I thought about what I wanted to say, when I was thinking about the school board and your support of our program, I need to mention how thankful we are to Anne Bremer, who is no longer with us, but who was such a huge supporter of our team. I think she was in Jeff's ear for several years about making sure that our team had a facility that wasn't a cafeteria to practice in, and that made all of the difference in the world with our last bond referendum and the opportunity that we had to take over the Grandview Middle School, actually, we take over the entire school, but especially the gym, to be able to go there after school. We wouldn't be standing here if we didn't have the facilities that we have and the support that we've had from our community. We are so proud of the history of this program and for every, we're proud of every team that has qualified for the state tournament. The first Minnesota State High School League tournament that our team qualified for was back in 2004, and we've, since 2007, qualified each year, and we've just been believers in incremental progress year after year, and I would say that every alumni of this team, not that anyone's necessarily watching this, but we just want to thank every member of this team throughout the last several decades for all of the work that they've put in, because every year has been a step up for our program. Jeff mentioned our jazz team that placed third, I don't know, a little trivia for you, in 2018, we placed fourth, which was very exciting, we were very proud of that. In 2019, we placed fourth, and again in 2020, 21, and another fourth place finished in 2022. At one point, I had told the girls that my lucky number was four, and they told me I needed to find a new lucky number. So it was an amazing victory for our team to receive that medal in jazz, and yet, I know what they'd been thinking all year in the back of their heads, they knew they, they knew they had it, they knew that they had a chance to be named state champion, but they knew it was going to take everything they had. This year, our focus was on being a stronger team mentally, being a stronger team physically. We've had a lot of fun with Coach Noward in the weight room, and done so many new things together as a team, and we adopted the mentality, the phrase "just us," and we just focused on our team. We said hi to the competitors, but we didn't worry about them, it was just about us, it was just about our growth every week, and we knew we could do it. Hearing our name... that has qualified for the state tournament. The first Minnesota State High School League tournament that our team qualified for was back in 2004, and we've, since 2007, qualified each year, and we've just been believers in incremental progress year after year, and I would say that every alumni of this team, not that anyone's necessarily watching this, but we just want to thank every member of this team throughout the last several decades for all of the work that they've put in, because every year has been a step up for our program. Jeff mentioned our jazz team that placed third. I don't know, a little trivia for you, in 2018, we placed fourth, which was very exciting. We were very proud of that. In 2019, we placed fourth, and again in 2020, twenty-one, and another fourth place finished in 2022. At one point, I had told the girls that my lucky number was four, and they told me I needed to find a new lucky number. So it was an amazing victory for our team to receive that medal in jazz, and yet, I know what they'd been thinking all year in the back of their heads. They knew they, they knew they had it. They knew that they had a chance to be named state champion, but they knew it was going to take everything they had. This year, our focus was on being a stronger team mentally, being a stronger team physically. We've had a lot of fun with Coach Noward in the weight room and done so many new things together as a team, and we adopted the mentality, the phrase "just us," and we just focused on our team. We said hi to the competitors, but we didn't worry about them. It was just about us, it was just about our growth every week, and we knew we could do it. Hearing our name called first state champion was one of the most amazing moments of my life, and I know everyone else is. And we are just so proud of our team. We're so proud to represent our district and to hear West Tonka. I don't know if you know, that a lot of the teams we compete against are, are not necessarily public schools, they are, are private, and they have a longstanding tradition of success at the state dance team tournament. So just to be Mount West Tonka and to, to hear our district's name called was, was really special. So we're very thankful to the rest of our coaching staff, to our parents, so many of them are here, and we're so grateful for you, for our community support, and we're just grateful to, to be here tonight and to be able to celebrate this success. So Coach Margot Spangers, proud alumni of the Hockeberg Dance Team, she is going to announce the girls, and the girls, you can... Yes! First up, we have Josie Mullen. We have Kendall Schisler. Avery Rory. Jaden Houston. Malia Valarde. Next up, we have Jada Vidal. McKenna Sykes. Madeline Weedy. Keith Johnson. Allison Kaiser. Edie Hollenstein. Emily Hallen. And Natty Carlson.
Thank you. Just like to say one more time, thanks to our parents and all of our student athletes for joining us here tonight, and again, thank you for the continued support.
Thank you.
What's your name?
Yeah. Yes. Thank you, school board, for opening up the meeting to public comments. My name is Margaret Sunquist, current employee at Mount West Tonka High School as a special education teacher. This is my second year as a teacher and fourth year working in education overall. However, I fear that I will be a statistic, one of many teachers leaving the profession at an alarming rate for reasons that I will state below. Tonight, I am on the agenda for the approval of the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract 1.0 FTE, probationary teacher. On Thursday, March 23rd, at 2:30 PM, I was invited by the Director of Special Education Services and the principal, in the principal's office, to quote, "talk about the school year and how things have gone," end quote. As I sat with them, I learned that the meeting, to my surprise, was to notify me that they would be reposting my position. I requested a summary in writing of this meeting so that I may review its contents and have it on record to help inform my decision. Instead of respecting my request, which was a request obligated by law, I was interrupted and told to give them a response of either resigning or termination of contract by end of day, April 7th. In the interim, I requested a written explanation on Monday, April 3rd, for the decision that was reached, to which they responded, quote, "read through the performance evaluations. Within those, you will see some of the concerns that prevented you from offering a continuing contract," end quote. There was nothing negative written within these evaluations, only constructive feedback to improve my craft. According to Minnesota State Statute 181.933 subdivision 1, quote, "An employee who has been involuntarily terminated may, within 15 working days, follow such termination request in writing that the employer inform the employee of the reason for the termination," end quote. This has not happened. Additionally, according to Minnesota State Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5, quote, "If the teacher requests reasons for any non-renewal of a teaching contract, the board must give the teacher and its reason in writing, including a statement that appropriate supervision was furnished, describing the nature and the extent of such supervision furnished the teacher during the employment by the board, within 10 days after receiving such request," end quote. I must bring this to your attention, because if the West Tonka School District does not want to be one of the reasons why teachers are leaving, leaders need to be aware of the environment and support required for teacher retention. I was privately informed by someone who is knowledgeable to all sped departments in the district. The sped team at Mount West Tonka High School is the most difficult to work with out of all the schools in the district. Other support staff and teachers in and out of special education can confirm this. As a new teacher to the district, I was initially excited to be working at the high school. Soon into my first year, my excitement was discouraged. It is quiet but widespread knowledge that there is passive-aggressive and downright mean behavior exhibited from experienced special ed staff. I know that school staff operate differently, but compared to the three schools in which I have worked, this environment is by far the worst and most difficult to navigate. Many of the special ed paras and one of the special ed teachers have already left the district this school year. I am a good teacher. I was disappointed to learn about my termination of my contract. Given there are no complaints verbally or written by students, parents, or other non-administrative staff, I was not given notice or called on a performance improvement plan before being terminated. I care deeply about my students, their well-being, and preparing them for success, both during and after high school. Finally, and importantly, I inherently understand my students' needs. You should know that I was a special ed student before I became a special ed teacher. Yes, I have a disability, and I am in a protected class. That means the accommodations and support I have asked during the school year and which are not provided could be grounds for an EE OC claim. Thank you for your time. And I've copied some of the performance reviews if you'd like for your review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more people to talk to?
Yes, I would like to also speak. Please.
State your name. State your name, please.
Good evening, my name is Deb Sunquist. I'm an attorney for 26 years, and now I serve the State of Minnesota in an official capacity. And I'm here in support of Margaret Sunquist, who is on the agenda for termination. As a public official, I understand what it's like. You're all public officials, you're here to serve the public, to understand and to be responsible not only for the school district, but also for the staff, for the students, et cetera. And I am here to say that I think there's something really wrong with the special education department at the West Tonka High School. You might think that the case of Ms. Sunquist is just, oh, this rental employee, but that's not the case. There have been many people who turned over, several paraprofessionals in the special education department, several teachers. I did a random study over just several schools within the metro area, and over the last couple weeks, actually, the number of openings, the number of people turning over in other schools in the, in the area led me to a conclusion, and this is it, that the West Tonka High School, the West Tonka School District, has a significantly higher vacancy rate and turnover rate of their special education department than most of the other schools. This is what the numbers show. West Tonka has four times the turnover and vacancy rate of the Dyna School System. West Tonka has three times that of the Mendota High School System. West Tonka has 7.5 times that of the Wazetta School System, 750% more. I think it's something that as a school board, you should be, should be aware of and pay attention to, because Ms. Sunquist may be the first person who's spoken out, but there will be others, and I just want you to pay attention. That's all I have to say. Thank you. I do have...
There's numbers too.
Anybody else to talk? We're holding up the treasurer's report. We'll do the treasurer's report at the next meeting, we're dropping off town, and then we'll move on to the student ref report.
I will keep this short and sweet. This month, Student Senate has been making plans in preparation for hosting the state convention, which will be hosted at the high school, April 28th through the 30th. We have a meeting with the state exec board tomorrow, actually. Prom follows, hosted at the Nicolet Island Pavilion on May 6th, and we are also preparing for our student versus staff basketball game, which will be held on May 7th in the gym. Future medical professionals has been meeting and hosting professionals to speak with interested students about their experiences in the field. Letters of Love has also had a very successful monthly meetings and are also looking forward to a very uplifting spring. Students Against Destructive Decisions is hoping to host an event in the next month to educate students about the dangers of distracted driving. Environmental Club has also been hosting bi-weekly meetings discussing a range of topics, including how Minnesota is impacted by climate change. They are currently hosting an art submission contest with climate change-inspired pieces, and submissions are due April 15th, with three winners and prizes to follow. Fashion Club, Outdoor Endeavors, Saga, Spanish Club, Gaming Club, and Link Crew are all also active. In the arts, concert choir members have chosen pieces of classical music to utilize for solo and ensemble competition, hosted this Friday at Hutchinson. Band is also hosting our district's large group contest, and their contest preview concert was recently. The cast of The Play That Goes Wrong was also recently given their awards from the Hennepin Theater Trust. This is the recognition at what is equivalent to a state level. These included honorable mention in achievement in theater, honorable mention overall performance, honorable mention ensemble performance, honorable mention acting performance, outstanding run crew, outstanding overall technical team, and most notably, outstanding overall production. This particular accomplishment earned them the honor of attending and performing an excerpt at the Spotlight Showcase this summer at the State Theater. The GMS Musical, Willy Wonka, and The Chocolate Factory have been in rehearsals for a few months and are preparing to perform this weekend. West Tonka Community Theater also performed their enrichment outreach, the Children's Playhouse, and they are also hosting an interest night on April 17th for this summer's production of Bye Bye Birdie. Matt Jazz has begun learning the repertoire for coffeehouse jazz performances that will take place May 12th and 13th at St. John's Church. The speech team is in sections this week, and of course, celebrated Connor Houston's success, and are working to send him to Arizona. Ms. Harms has started a GoFundMe to raise the necessary $3,000 to allow him to attend, and so far, they've raised a third. In athletics, of course, wrestling ended recently, and Coach Monster Tiger said that they had a great year and took several steps towards achieving their goals in the program. Spring sports include baseball, tennis, softball, volleyball, track and field, lacrosse, and golf. These all began last week with practices held indoors while we wait for the weather to improve, of course, and the teams are very excited to get outside and get active. In academics, DECA is sending 28 students to the International Career Development Conference in Orlando from April, April 22nd to the 25th. Notably, Senior Ellen Prout is a DECA officer, serving as Vice President of Communications. She's had the distinction of taking first place at state in her integrated marketing campaign for three years in a row. They hosted their annual bingo fundraiser last week to much success. Also notably, Laura Sonbord will be recognized as a national DECA scholarship winner at the final award ceremony. She is one of two students from the state of Minnesota to receive this honor. Senior Abby Hollingstein was named the Athena Award winner. She's a three-sport athlete, participating in soccer, basketball, and track and field. Abby is also involved in National Honor Society, DECA, Link Crew, and the Rotary and Track Club. She's earned multiple academic excellence awards and was recognized as a distinguished student and AP scholar. And finally, last but not least, NHS has also been very active, particularly with their blood drive, last month collecting 45 units of blood. And that is all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any school board committee reports, anybody? Kathy, we're on the financial report.
Good evening. I'll also try to keep this short and sweet. I have the basic business services report through the end of March. Our April 1st enrollment count, I'm pleased to report that it is 2,405 students. We gained eight students over the prior month, and that was due to some new families that we welcomed into our, our school district. So you can see that as the chart fills up, you know, we're getting closer to the end of the school year, so another month or two, and that will wrap up our enrollment counts. The financial data, revenue and expenditures through the end of March, our revenue collected is $20,312,000, which is 58.7%. We have expended $23,814,000 of our revised budget, listed in the yellow. The expenses are at 66.6%. We are happy with how they're pacing from the prior two school years, and as I've mentioned before, the prior two school years, we refer to as our COVID years, so we always like to take an extra step to ensure that our numbers are aligning properly, so we look back at year three, four, and five, just because the COVID years are a little bit unusual. And again, we're pleased that it's on track and we should be landing in at the end of the school year as projected with our revised budget. Just a few other things going on in the business office. Our adopted budget is underway, we'll be presenting that at our June regular meeting. As part of the budget planning and prep, a couple bigger items are insurance. We're going up for bids for property liability and workman's comp, going to the market to see if we can get better pricing. And then we also just finished the long life and long-term disability insurance, and you'll see that on your agenda later. We're pleased our life insurance stayed exactly the same, and our long-term disability insurance was actually slightly less than what we're currently paying. Another item that's a bigger ticket item that I'm working on with Corey Wolf, our Director of Technology, is our copy release. We're working on getting the best pricing and the right sizing our machines to what we need with today's technology. And lastly, we have our final finance committee meeting of the 22-23 school year on June 1st, and we'll be reviewing all of those items with our finance committee. Any questions? Thank you.
Did I get, excuse me, is I getting organized here? Insurance nights, I see so many students here in celebration tonight, it's great to get back to that, but let me just get myself organized here. Mark, come on, right back.
Any questions? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Excuse me, as I get organized here, it sure is nice to see so many students here and celebrate them out tonight. It's great to get back to that, but we just get myself organized here.
Mark, come on, be right back.
One moment. All right, so I just have a couple items tonight, and I wanted to give you an update on our multi-tiered systems of support, work that we're doing here in the district. It's a big effort across the district, and if you recall, back in twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we contracted with the University of Minnesota Center for Applied Research, Educational Improvement, C A R E, and they did a study here in our district on our mental health services, our supports for students. That laid a wonderful groundwork foundation for the work that we've gotten into this year. And this year, what we've talked about all year is this idea of a framework called multi-tier systems of support. And it addresses academics, it addresses socio-emotional health, and addresses behavior, health, and attendance. And especially coming out of the pandemic, we've seen, we've experienced many things with our students, positive, challenging, and this framework is beginning to serve us very well on how we can support students. So think about those three different domains, and then there's a tier one, tier two, and tier three support in those areas. This school year, there's five different areas that comprise the framework. We've been working on getting our teams together at the district level, at the building level, to implement the framework. We've talked about multi-levels of instruction and intervention, so when you think about tier one support, that's in the classroom, and that's how we support kids with the teacher in the classroom. And now we're getting better and better at looking at data, and if we realize students are not making progress, not only academics, but more now in socio-emotional and behavior type domains, then we go into a tier two support. And then from there, if we feel like kids are not making progress, it'll be a tier three. We're just building that out this year, and part of the focus this year was on January twenty-third, we had an all-district training at the PAC, just talking about M T S S, making sure not only our licensed staff get on board, but our professionals also understand what this framework gives. So we are right in the middle of this work. I'm proud to say that we have the teams figured out, we know what tier one support looks like in the classroom, we have tier two starting to really formalize in our buildings. And honestly, it's the tier three that's the challenging piece because that is where you maybe have one-on-one support for students, and we need staff, we need program, we need time and the schedule. And there'll be more and more focus on that next year. And you hear about what is called our ATCS grant. Our ATCS grant is where we have funding for intervention. ATCS is critical for us to be able to do well with our M T S S process. But I wanted to share tonight that the progress is going forward, is going very well. I'm proud of the staff and the effort because it does require change, it requires effort, and as we go into next year, you're going to continue to see this implementation as we go deeper and deeper this year. So that's just a quick update on M T S S. The last thing I want to share with you, this is the week we've started our state testing. I will say, Grand View always has their fifth grade science M C A testing done before spring break, so they're done with that. But this is a big week starting tomorrow, actually for the next three weeks. And what I just want to share about state testing, because, you know, during the pandemic, got out of the habit, you know, it just was a very, it was just a messy time. But we are emphasizing in our schools, with our student body, from my office, with our principals, that state testing, it is another snapshot of academic learning in our district, and it's important. And also, what I always talk about, our district is in one of the most competitive areas of the state, that it's accountability for our families, it's accountability for our community, and people watch. And so we do need to do our very best. It's a sign of our rigor in our classrooms. So we start this week, it'll go all through April, and then it's, I'll give preliminary results sometime in June, and then formal results come in August. And I'll do a report here, August, September, when everything's finalized.
Looking forward to seeing you.
Yes. Me, too. That's my report.
I have a question.
Yes.
Remind me about the ATCS grant.
Yes.
Is that, we are using that grant specifically for M T S S work?
Yes.
And is it one-time money, is it something that?
It's a grant that we apply for, it's dollars from the state, and we apply every two years.
Okay.
And we use it for staffing, you can use it for remedial curriculum programs. It is designed to support students at the school.
Okay, that's coming, it's state dollars?
State dollars.
But you have to apply for it every two years?
Correct.
Okay, correct.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
So, members of the board community, we are in the process of continuing to get feedback on our facilities, and so we've appreciated everyone that's commented thus far. We have a facilities committee on Wednesday where we're going to be talking a little bit about another community survey of how to get feedback, and so, board members, we will be conducting that here in April, getting results to the facilities committee in May, and then to the board as a whole at June. Right now, we continue to receive really positive feedback on the plan that, or the priorities, I should say, that came out of the facilities committee, so people are, have been really positive. I'm going to be going to a Mount City Council meeting tomorrow night to talk about those as well. But just encourage anybody that's looked at the plan, that's been on our website, that's heard something, if you have questions, just make sure you reach out if you have any questions, concerns, and we can get, hear those and then be able to move with those ideas. We are in the process of fourth quarter, which is a lot of celebrations, which is exciting, but we also have a lot that we gear up for the next school year. And so the team right now is working through all the facets of how we close the year and begin the year, and just really appreciative of their efforts as they do that work. And so those really are two of the primary areas of focus and answering questions that you might have.
Questions, anybody? Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Discussion items? Chair moves for approval of action item eight A, approval of three-year quoted rates for life and long-term disability insurance with Madison Life Insurance. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Chair moves for approval of action item eight B, approval of addition of a 1.0 FTE reading specialist teacher position at Montez Tonka High School. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Chair moves for approval of action item eight C, approval of contract days reduction for the attendance general office paraprofessional position at Grand New Middle School for the twenty-twenty-three school year. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item eight D, approval of the district's self-insured dental plan administered by Health Partners with no plan changes and no monthly premium increase. That's great news. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Chair moves for approval of action item eight E, approval of a non-exclusive public lake access easement agreement between the city of Mount and the West Tonka School District. Where's that at?
So what we have here before is the ability to do an easement with the city of Mount, which allows the D N R to do funding on a pier that would go into Dutch Lake. That pier would be utilized for science and other curriculum classes. Really excited about our partnership with the city and the D N R to try to bring this funding in the community so our kids can have that opportunity. And so that's on the lake access of Grand View.
So it would be open to the public, then, in a school?
The pier vision, very likely.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Chair moves for approval of action item eight F, approval of a partnership between West Tonka School District and the Minnesota Department of Education of the implementation of classroom engagement model and the joint powers agreement. Is there a second?
Heidi's second.
Heidi's second. Thank you, thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Chairman Warner for item eight G, I would make a motion on the table, either G.
And I second.
Okay, I would go over that, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay. Chair moves for approval of action item eight H, approval of the resolution proposing the placement of Aurora Junior on a 1.0 FTE on request of leave of absence. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Well, we need to do a roll call on that.
Yep.
I believe you do the roll call.
I think I do it.
The clerk does it, yeah.
I got that.
You got it, okay, all right, thank you.
So, Bobby.
Aye.
Okay, Carlson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Harrison is absent. Marty?
Aye.
And Warner?
Aye.
So, motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. Is there any further business to come before the board here tonight? If not, chair moves for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening, everybody.